Good evening. My name is Greg Cooks. I'm the Chair of the Gig Harbor Planning Commission. It is Thursday, August 4th, and it is 6:00 PM. And I am calling this open public hearing to order. First thing I would like to do is roll call Commissioner Brainerd.
President.
Commissioner Bradbury.
President.
Commissioner Soltes.
Here.
Commissioner Krosick.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Bennett will not be with us this evening. From the city staff, we have Carl DeCemus, Jeremy Hammer, Michelle Thomas, and the City Attorney Daniel Kenny. And thank you all for being here. And then I am sure we will have some attendees from the public, which we are always excited to see. So welcome to you all as well. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our July 21st meeting. Are there any corrections or discussion about those minutes? If not, I'm willing to entertain a motion for approval.
I so move.
Krosick moves.
I second that.
Commissioner Brainerd on the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motions say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Okay. First thing we'll do is we will take a public comment under the new requirement for any non-agenda items. So if there's anyone from the public that would like to make such a comment, again, this is for non-agenda items. Keep in mind that we have an open public hearing for the short-term rental agenda items. So if that's what you'd like to speak about, please wait until that time. Otherwise, I'm willing to open the floor to any public comment. Seeing no hands, we will move on. I will close the public comment portion of this meeting and we'll move on with our main agenda item. So here we are. So I will turn our open public hearing discussion over to Carl DeCemus from the city planning staff.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. Good evening, planning commissioners and members of the public in attendance tonight. Thank you for attending. So as the Chair said, yes, here we are. This is our second public hearing relative to short-term rental regulations. And it's been, this will be also our 11th meeting on this, on this matter. So this has been, it's been a good long ride. And we've done a lot of really, really great work around this regulation. So hopefully you all are feeling good about it at this point. We, at the last couple of planning commission meetings, we reviewed sort of the last bastion of outstanding items and went through tables trying to come up with what we felt would be good regulation to include in our, in our draft and ultimately in planning commission's recommendation to the city council. There was one outstanding item that was, that was brought up at the, at the last meeting that planning commissioners asked staff to take a look at, and that is whether or not the city, whether or not we can allow, these regulations could allow short-term rentals that have been operating in the city without approved permits and that are also not the primary residence of the owner to apply for a permit under these regulations. Staff has taken a look at that. We've, we've discussed with the, with the city attorney. And we can't find any, any legal way of doing such a thing without essentially writing a, well, there's two ways. You could, you could write a completely new ordinance for those in particular. Or we could allow the moratorium that we have in place on lodging level one uses to expire and allow anyone to come in. So the, 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 the issue here is that we can't really just pick and choose and say, you, you are allowed to apply for this permit, but you are not. We either have to open it up so that all would have that opportunity or go with the regulations that we have in place. And the reason being that those operations that we're just, we're talking about or that we're focused on with, with a regulation or with, with that thought is, are are not established under any city process, under any city permitting process. So essentially have never been legally established. The only few that we have in the city, so right now that are actually legal, legally operating, legally sanctioned short-term rentals are those with conditional use permits. Those that just have a business license or those that don't have either were never legally established and therefore don't have any non-conforming rights. And Chair, I don't know if we want to have a discussion about that before you open the public hearing. That's, that's pretty much my presentation for the evening, other than to say that, you know, we've, we've provided the, the draft regulations, dispersion. We've provided a public comment that was received after our last meeting and before we opened the public hearing for tonight as sort of informational. And then we've provided public comments that we received after we noticed the public, this public hearing tonight.
Okay, thanks. I think it's probably a good idea, just since, you know, there's some commissioners had questions about them, that particular point to allow them to ask questions or have any discussion if they need some clarification. So I'll open the floor up to the commissioners. Commissioner Krosick.
Yes. We received our, a proposal from one of our other commissioners asking the, about whether it would be possible to have a limited number of short-term non-owner occupied short-term rentals in Gig Harbor. So Carl, is it possible to write the ordinance in such a way that you could say that we had, we could have 15, 20, 30, 50, 100 non-owner occupied short-term rentals without any reference to whether those short-term rentals are currently operating or not?
I, I believe that it would be possible. It would be another, you know, it'd be, we would have to draft a new provision. And essentially we would be looking at, and I, and I assume that you're referring to Commissioner Brown's proposal. We would be creating two classes of, of short-term rental in that case. And one would be coming in under that, you know, we'd be kind of back to that discussion of owner occupied or hosted versus non-owner occupied or un-hosted. Or short-term rental one, short-term rental two. I mean, it, it can certainly be done. It just, it changes the, I think it changes the underlying premise of what the regulations we've drafted here were intended to do.
Okay, thanks, Carl.
Anyone else? Okay. So we will move on to our open public hearing. So for those in the public that would like to make a comment, you just need to indicate by raising your hand on your Zoom and I will recognize you. I will just go down the list, not necessarily in the order of who raises their hand first, because I can't see that on my screen. If you're on a cell phone, you may need to press star nine on your phone to raise your hand and then star six to unmute yourself. Commenters will be allotted three minutes for each individual. We would ask you first provide your name and whether or not you are a member, or excuse me, a resident of Gig Harbor. At the end of your comments, the staff will notify you. It has come to the end of your comment period. And anyone making out of order comments may be subject to removal from the meeting. All marks shall be addressed to the commission as a body and not to any specific commissioner. We request that all speakers be courteous in their language and deportment and should not engage in or discuss or comment on personalities or indulge in derogatory marks or insinuations with regard to any commissioner, the Chair, or any member of the staff or the public. There will be no demonstrations during or at the conclusion of any public comment. These guys lines are intended to promote an orderly system of holding a public meeting to give every person an opportunity to be heard and to ensure that no individuals are embarrassed by voicing their concerns. So as you approach the end of your three minutes, Michelle will give you an indication that you have 30 seconds left. And at the end of the, the three minutes, she will turn off your microphone at that time. So having said that, I will go to the list and anyone who is interested in making a public comment, please raise your electronic hand. Okay, I see the first hand up. And that is Bonnie O'Malley and you are currently muted. Bonnie, if you're speaking, we can't hear you because your microphone is muted. Well, well, Ms. O'Malley sorts that out. Why don't we move on and see if there's any other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, Rosa, I see your hand up. You may go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Rosa Alejo and I do live in Gig Harbor, but not in the proper city of Gig Harbor. But we do own a property within the city limits. And we really, you know, first of all, I just want to thank you for all of your time and effort that you've poured into the requirements. Just want to say that, you know, just appreciate all of that and all of these public hearings that you've been having. Also, I just want to say, you know, as a new owner of a new property here in the city, you know, we, we're not doing it for like a huge profit. We really love the city. We want to share that with others. And I think it's a win-win for the city and for us as well, as small business owners. The city receives not only lodging taxes, but also we, you know, are supporting our local small businesses. We're giving them, you know, advertising, we're saying like, we're, we're the, we're the best place to visit. So it's not like we're trying to, I think we're just trying to help the city and promote that small town feeling. And Gig Harbor is not one of those towns where people come and party and it's more like couples or families that come to visit. So I think it's in our best interest as a small business owner to make sure that we're not making noise and that we're upkeeping our property. So want to say that. And also, um, the last thing, you know, I just hope that you, you know, considered like opening this up to more people and closing the moratorium. So others can, and are able to enjoy a, or be able to make or continue with their small business and be able to pay the bills for the property that they have. And continue to like, close the gap that we currently have with, you know, lodging within Gig Harbor. Because there are so many people that want the lodging. For example, we have out of town family members and that they just end up having to do an Airbnb because there's nothing available in the town. Well, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Okay. Carolyn, I see your hand up. Carolyn, you're also muted at the moment.
Unmute.
Yes, there you go. We can hear you now.
Great. I wrote to actually Ms. Knudsen, our city administrator this week, because I was concerned about a submission that you all received that is in the packet from a woman who did not identify where she lives, nor was there an email address associated with her email to all of you. And Mr. Stecker actually replied to me, and this is exactly what he said. Only the city council requires oral and or written commentators to provide an address when giving public comment. The planning commission could consider a requirement like this in their bylaws in the future. However, providing an address is not currently a requirement and it was not advertised as a requirement in the notice for this week's public hearing. The planning commission should not be imposing this requirement on any of their commenter, commenters during the meetings. So I just, I wanted you all to know that the city council does require that the address is given, but according to Mr. Stecker, the planning commission is not supposed to inquire as to whether you live in the city or not, whether it's a written submission or an oral submission. I hope that you work on that to change it and, and get your bylaws in line with the city council. I think that would be beneficial and safe for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that input. Okay, back to Bonnie O'Malley. You're still muted, Bonnie?
I should be unmuted now.
Yes, there you go. We can hear you.
Okay. I'm asking that you please revisit the specifics of how this movement against the STRs got started. Who started the ball rolling toward the emergency moratorium, which was not an emergency by any definition? What criteria was used? What documentation of complaints? It seems to me that a handful of politically oriented and well-connected individuals instigated this movement, that it was born of a herd mentality with an anti-STR agenda, which has become a battle cry nationwide. More of the knot in my backyard antagonists than a movement based on actual negative interactions. Elsewhere, yes, there are high-profile issues, but not in Gig Harbor. Why? Because STRs owners here police themselves. And yes, it is a movement using city government not to just regulate, but to seriously diminish the opportunity of current and future STR availability in this city. I know the final say will not be yours, but you will be influencers and your positions individually and as a group will carry weight. Please reevaluate those positions with an eye toward the best solutions to the regulations and not an unquestionable minority of special interests behind the scenes instigators with no validated documented or legitimate complaints. I'm asking you to take a good hard look at the successful and uneventful operations to date of the current STRs. I'm asking you to rethink modern day buzzwords like affordability. If you want to see what affordability does to a community, take a look at the beauty of our community that has been raped by that concept. Ripping out our forests and overbuilding to accommodate wall-to-wall affordable homes and overloading the infrastructure of this community. STRs had nothing to do with that. For those who claim that they want to insulate our downtown area to preserve the history and charm, please reread Suzanne Wiltbank's letter. That's exactly what she worked so hard to do. A hard one, charming STR, well-loved by everyone who visits it, which happens to also be the income that keeps her head above water. And she's not the only one by far, but she is a desperate situation and willing to speak up. Would anyone agree with me that focusing on the downtown and especially Millville, where the existing STRs have actually added substantially to reviving the charm of our historic area, even be considered discriminatory? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that, Ms. O'Malley. The next hand up says Gig Harbor Chamber of Commerce. You are, your microphone is muted. There you go.
There you go. All right. This is Marion Batson. I'm the President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. And there's two things that I want to point out. We did write a letter and opposing the language for the owner occupied or the primary residence. And so I want to talk to it into, on two separate things. With the chamber office, we run the, one of the two visitor centers in town. When visitors are coming in and they are identifying as staying in town at a short-term rental or a VRBO, Airbnb, they are the people who are coming in, their families now, or they're a couple looking for ideas on, okay, where should we go eat? What are the things that we should do? So they're driving revenue into the downtown area as well as other parts of the community. We'll encourage them to go check out uptown. We'll encourage them to check out downtown. We'll show them where the parks are and they're having a really good time and they're usually staying for about a week or so in our area. And so, and it's been fun to see them in the different shops later in the day or on the weekend. So that's something that I want to point out. I'm asking the team also in our office to start tracking when they're coming in and they identify as staying at an Airbnb, tracking some of that information. Because just the other day, I was speaking with somebody who had an Airbnb on Sunrise Beach and they just said it was lovely and having such a good time. My concern would be that if with this primary residence, that the short-term rental options would then go outside the city, then the revenue for the city goes away and it becomes more, more revenue for the county. I, you know, I'm in favor of, or the chamber is in favor of having more LTAC funds for the city to work with for tourism dollars, because that helps drive the local economy. The second point is we have used Airbnbs, VRBOs to connect with short-term rentals in other areas. There was only one occasion in which, and we didn't know it at the time, that it was partially owner occupied. So I want to speak to our experience of having a partially owner occupied STR from a, from a patron experience. It was awkward because they still had, and we didn't find out about this until we started communicating with the person directly. And he said, hey, okay, thank you. We live there part-time, so there will be food in the fridge. And so for us to, it was just awkward. And then there was clothes hanging in the closets too. So it's just, it's a very awkward feel and I don't know that I would stay in that kind of a home again. Anyway, thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you for joining us for the first time. Okay. I don't see any other hands up. So therefore, I will close the public hearing at this time. Okay. Time for discussion amongst the commissioners. So we've had, as, as Carl said, we've had 11 meetings. We've had lots of hours. Most of those meetings pushed three hours. I appreciate that you all have done a lot of, put in a lot of extra time outside of these meetings. And so we have come to the point where we have a draft ordinance to consider here this evening. So based on everything to date and the additional public comments, both written and what we just heard orally, as well as the input from a couple commissioners, I just would invite some follow-on discussion. Hopefully we can come to a conclusion this evening.
And Chair, if I could interject really quickly, I also, Jeremy and I have drafted findings for the fourth planning commission to review at this evening's meeting. One, when, when and if we get to that point. So these would be, these would be findings that would accompany the planning commission's recommendation and the draft regulations up to city council. And, and I can, I can share that with, share that screen with planning commission whenever we're ready to, to do so.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that work. Okay, who would like to start us off? Commissioner Soltes.
Let's see. Okay, a couple, a couple of easy ones here, if I could, maybe to get some momentum. There was several comments that I thought were pretty strong about discussing affordability and the, the three As, if you will, early on in the intent section. I, I think we, we really need to rethink putting those kinds of words in the ordinance. It's somewhat, somewhat stretched to me to worry about affordability in a multimillion dollar home neighborhood. I mean, these homes are, this is never really going to be anymore, I don't think, in affordable, at least in the Millville area, affordable area. And I think kind of putting those words in the ordinance may not really be realistic. So I was going to propose that maybe we move some of those words out of there under the intent section and keep it very crisp and, and narrow. We really want to put in a good set of regulations, a fair, reasonable kind of thing. And let's leave the overall big, big picture discussions affordability to, to somebody else. That's one thing I throw out. The second thing is on the, our fines that we have a fine section, I think we've got it a little more generic now than we had initially. But to my mind, there's, there's almost two tiers that we ought to think about. One is if you're operating a STR illegally in the city, there should be a very serious and sustained effort to go after those facilities, whatever we define to be illegal at some point in time. That to me is different than an operational issue where somebody has a noise violation or a parking problem. I think that it's worth making a distinction between those two things. And, and I don't know, Carl, how we go after other illegal operations in the city. If we find people doing the wrong thing in a business, how we would proceed with that. But that would seem to be different than somebody that happens to have a, a bad STR renter come in and make, have, have a noise problem. So I would say there's an opportunity for a two-tier approach if we need that. And I'll start, I'll stop there for now, Greg.
Okay, thanks. Any reaction from other commissioners to those comments?
I, I would concur with the language regarding affordable housing. But I do, I do have a question there. Is, is that language originating from state requirements? That's why I never said anything about it before. But, but the fact is Gig Harbor is simply not an affordable community, period. And so STRs in and of themselves are not going to have a meaningful impact on affordability within the community of Gig Harbor. So I would go back to, is, is that kind of language driven by state requirements?
An answer to the question about that, state requirements, I don't, I don't believe that it is. And there's no, no connection to any state law that I'm aware of. The reason for that language is based on several articles and some of those articles and information that we found that were provided by planning commissioners. And information that we found that were provided by planning commissioners as well. That do point to the idea that short term rentals affect. Attainable, available and affordable housing in, in, and it's been shown in several. Municipalities jurisdictions across the country. Now, I, I agree that saying that in Gig Harbor maybe. It could be deemed a misnomer, but we also have to remember that we're. Not just focused on Millville and Finn Hall or just that downtown area or just along Soundview. We have to look at this on a citywide basis. And so the intent of these regulations is to regulate short term rentals across the city, not just in those. Neighborhoods where, you know, the housing prices might not be deemed affordable.
I, I understand that, Carl. And my, my comment was citywide. I, I used to be in real estate and today. It would be very hard to find any home, even a home needing major repairs. Anywhere in the city limits of Gig Harbor for less than $450,000. And I personally do not consider that affordable housing. And that would be dirt cheap. And I think we all know it.
Well, and maybe, maybe it is the affordability, maybe that's the A that, that doesn't make sense in that statement. I would, I think I would stand by available availability and attainability. Because the studies have, that we've seen or those articles that we've read do show that. Short term rentals or conversions to short term rentals do take. Single family, mostly single family residential homes out of the market for. Folks who want to buy a single family home or even to rent a single family home long term. So it does decrease our. Our housing stock and the diversity of our housing stock in that way.
And I would agree with that.
Other comments on that subject? Commissioner Griner?
I, I like what Carl just said, of taking out the affordable and keeping in the available and obtainable. I think that that gets us where we're trying to go. But it removes the language that seems to be more controversial.
Or, or at least disingenuous.
Thank you.
Meaning I, I agree with you, Bob. On, on removing the, the affordability tag. And, and Larry's comments as well. Okay. And what was, what was the other point that, that? You raised, Bob?
Oh, I was talking about the code enforcement, making sure that we had two different levels.
Oh, right, right.
One for STRs operating illegally in the city and one for, I would say, minor operational issues.
And I think we discussed that a little bit, a meeting or two ago. And, and I actually, yeah, I, I, that's the meeting that I had to leave early, but then I watched the, the rest of the discussion and it seemed that, you know, there was a trip up there. And I, I do agree with the concept that you presented there as well. How did the rest of y'all feel? Commissioner Krasik?
Wasn't the solution that we came up with that there would be a daily fine for somebody who was. Operating an illegal STR. Carl, I think you mentioned that somebody was doing something outside the. Outside of the zoning or a developer was doing something illegal, there was a daily fine. And that's what we would utilize. For those that were operating illegal STRs. And it was, it would add up to substantial amount of money rather quickly.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, Commissioner Krasik. And so, yeah, what we decided was that we have, you know, we, we do have. Enforcement regulations in place already for. Title 17, which is where this regulation would live. And once we get to notice of violation. And if that notice of, if the corrective actions are not met. For that notice of violation, then we would end up in a civil penalty situation, which could be a hundred dollars per day. Retroactive to when the notice of violation was actually issued. So the, so the, the penalty, the civil penalty can add up very quickly. We also have the ability in this regulation because we're issuing. A permit as well as a business license. We have the ability to. To. Repeal the, losing the word, but to. Pull the business license that's been issued to that, to that operator. So essentially, they would be then operating illegally. From both the local jurisdiction and, and likely the state, the state's jurisdiction as well. So there's a couple of different. Hammers that we have available if someone is, is doing such. Now, if somebody is operating. Without any licensing or without any permitting or anything. Then that's, and we get a complaint on it, then that immediately becomes a, a code enforcement case after, after investigation.
Well, that's a lot of information, Carl. And, and the article B just has one line in there.
Yeah, you're right.
Maybe a little more elaboration there might help a casual reader of the.
I tried to keep it simple. You know, one of the things that we're working on right now is. Code enforcement with, with the city council. And we're looking at efficiencies. Throughout our code compliance, we're trying to use the word compliance now throughout our code compliance program. Because as it stands. Our code compliance officer is kind of spread out over all of these titles. And each one of these titles is sort of. Regulated differently when it comes to enforcement criteria. And because of that, we felt that we didn't want to add another layer. Within these regulations, particularly given that we may be writing some new enforcement regulations that sort of encompass. The entire Gig Harbor municipal code. That, at least that's a possibility that we could go that direction. So I did try and keep it simple, just, and maybe, would it, would it help if it were referencing the particular. Gig Harbor municipal code. Chapter, or does it just need some more explanation?
Well, my thrust here is guys and gals that there is concern that there are some things going on that. There's a perception perhaps from some people that, that there may be some problems. And I think. Making sure that people are assured in the ordinance that there's going to be a fair and. Comprehensive code enforcement activity under, underpinning all this would. Perhaps alleviate some citizens' concern. And we maybe owe it to them to make sure that it's clear. That the city's concerned, you know, taking, taking care here. Not a crisp answer, Carl, but you know, I just think it's, it's, this is kind of important for the, for everyone to make sure that they know the city's on the case.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. And, and I also believe that. Whatever the ordinance ends up being, that what you're speaking to protects the people that have gone through the process and are doing this legitimately. And they're not trying to compete against someone who's doing it kind of under the table. And. So I, I think it benefits everyone. The point that you're making. Okay. Other discussion? Commissioner Krasik?
Yeah, I'm, I'm. I'm kind of divided here in my thoughts. I am prepared to support the ordinance. As written by staff with those two minor changes that we just discussed. But I also wanted to poll the, or get some feeling from the other commissioners. As to whether they would be supportive of including in the ordinance language that would allow. Up to 35. Non-owner occupied short term rentals within the city. And I think that would be approximately the number of individuals that are operating short term rentals right now. We don't have any serious problems for them. However, I would not want to go beyond that number. Because I think the more short term rentals that we have in the city. The greater the possibility that there is going to be a problem. However, if the choice is between. An unlimited number of short term rentals. And a no, an unlimited number of non-owner occupied short term rentals. And the ordinance as written, I will definitely take the ordinance as written as my preference.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner Griner?
What I wanted to say is, in my, I always write notes of things, points I want to bring up. And. It seemed to me that we either require owner occupied or we do exactly. As he just suggested and have a number of non-owner occupied. I read some comments that said that you couldn't do it both ways. And. And I, I think that it's got to be one or the other. And so again, I, I would be comfortable. The only uncomfortable part of that would be choosing the number. So there you go.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bradbury?
Well, I, I was a proponent of not using the, the owner occupied kind of definition in the beginning. And we've voted on that. And, and those of us that did not want to. Have owner occupied as part of the ordinance were voted down. And so now, now it seems to be coming back to the table again. And that would require probably another meeting or two to discuss the language to make that change. And perhaps changes to other parts of the ordinance as well.
Well, I was, I was, I'm wondering with specific, specifically in relation to putting a cap on that number of, of non. Owner occupied STRs, as you know, John has proposed that there be a number.
I thought we discussed that quite some time ago. And, and I don't remember the reason why we didn't pursue that.
Well, I think one, one issue with the, with, with this idea is that if, if you're going to allow. Well, if you're opening it up to anyone. To come through the door, if that's what the proposal is. So we're not talking about just those. That have been operating within the city. Is that, is that correct, Commissioner Krasik?
That is correct, Carl, because as I, as you and I had communicated on that, there isn't a good, there isn't a way to get there. So this would have to be then the first 35 people that walked in the door. And my assumption is that. The people that are currently operating. These non-owner occupied short term rentals would probably be lined up on your doorstep on the first day that they could make the application. Because that would be a big motivation for them. And that you're probably not likely to get many in the way of people just. Kind of coming forward out of the woodwork and asking for these permits. So that's why, that's where the number comes from. And that's, that's basically the thought behind my, my idea here.
Mr. Brown?
Well, I'm generally in favor of that. I wonder why we wouldn't give priority within that. Limit of 35 or whatever number we decide. Why not give priority? To those who can show that they have been operating and have been paying taxes.
Because those that have been doing that have not been operating under any. Legally issued permit from the city. And therefore that would be, that would be sort of an unfair advantage that, that they would have.
But the idea would be to allow. All non-owner occupied STRs to be licensed now and, and. Grant amnesty to those that you just described, Carl. I mean, the idea is, is to. Basically grandfather them in, good or bad, if they're willing to sign up and, and be legal going forward. And to avoid a great controversy within the city and perhaps lawsuits and the rest. I mean, what harm could it do? I guess, if there is a limit to the number of non-owner occupied STRs within the city. So I, I'm in favor of that. I just. Certainly what's proposed is certainly a good idea in terms of. Trying not to cut out those people who are currently operating without any kind of. Conditional use permit. Question that comes to mind, Carl, is how did this dovetail with the legal advice that you talked about when the meeting began?
Well, I, I think that if. If we're going to discuss any legal advice that, that Carl has gotten or that we have gotten, that we need to go into executive session. And, and it may be that we need to do that here just to understand the feasibility of, of. Putting a hard cap on, on. The number of non-owner occupied STRs.
Yeah, I, I think that might be a good idea. I, I would, I definitely, before we do that, I can, I can say that we definitely, we would want, we would definitely. Want to caution Planning Commission on. Showing any favor to those. Short term rentals that have been operating in the city without. Legally issued permits from the city government because it, it. Well, maybe we should go into executive session and have that discussion and get the, get the legal advice from, from the city attorney.
But do we know if there are any? In fact, I mean, we've been saying for months, we don't know how many. STRs are operating in the city. We don't know where they are. I mean. What, what is the size of this problem?
Well, we don't know what the size of the problem is, but whatever we do here, we have to do legally. And if we're, if we're giving advantage to someone who's been operating. Sorry, Daniel, illegally. Then that puts, that, that, that puts some liability on the city. They, it should be fair across the board for anyone who wants to come in. To. Have a legal, legally permitted operation.
I think the conundrum, Tom, is that, that. If. We have been told consistently by the alliance itself that. That 80 or 90% or 88% or 90% are non-owner occupied. We also know from Air D, A, Air DNA that, that those people. Are doing business. Some people, and then we don't know who those people are, but there's a group operating. And we know from. The city planning staff that, that not all of them are licensed. So therefore they've been operating illegally. And so we can't, we can't give favor to, if we open this up, we can't give favor to. People who have been operating illegally in front of someone who says, okay, I see this new ordinance. I want to do this. And put them at the back of the line when they want to come in and from day one operate above board and legally.
Well, we, we, we have been giving them an advantage all the time they've been operating because we haven't been enforcing. All the time they've been operating because we haven't been enforcing. Uh, our, our regulations. Um, if, 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 if what you say is, is a. Turns out to be the, the, the legal position, then I would say. I would still want to see a thirty-five cap and let, let people get in line.
Oh.
So sorry, Carl, go ahead.
I was gonna say one more thing. The other thing we have to consider in this is that we do have some uh, operations in the city that have. Uh, have gone through the conditional use permit process to establish their lodging level one use. Uh, as a short-term rental, even though they've essentially changed the use of their property from a. Single-family residential home to a lodging level one, they're still operating as a short-term rental. Um, and so they've done, they've done it right. And we would essentially be saying, well, sorry that you went through what you went through. Um, to get your conditional use permit. These folks know, these folks who have been operating. Uh, below that, that standard are going to be allowed to come in under a different permitting process.
Carl, it was my understanding that those people with the conditional use permits would be allowed to continue to operate. This would not have any effect on them at all, other than they would have to apply to the operational. Or the uh, portions of the ordinance with respect to how they do their business. But again, my, my point on all of this is that. The people that are going to be up and ready to go to take advantage of those thirty-five permits. Would be those people that are already operating these because. Uh, from my own personal experience, it takes quite a bit of work, effort and money. To put one of these things together, to put a short-term rental together. And um. If you're not ready to go right now, or if you're not already doing this. You're not going to get in line for getting this permit. Uh, there's going to be, the other people are going to be ahead of you. And will get their permits before you and they're going, permits are going to run out before they get to you. That's just the practical effect of this and that's. Why I chose the figure of thirty-five because that's approximately the number of people. That we have that are operating these right now. And uh, that we don't seem to have any significant problem with.
Well, this might be a good uh, point to introduce. The very first definition. Uh, under the proposed ordinance and that is um, seventeen point oh four, um, point four 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 lodging level one. Um, and um. This. Uh, language can provide an opportunity. Um, for, for. The non-owner occupied to operate under a lodging level one. Um. And if you read it, it says lodging level one means a single-family residence which provides overnight lodging for guests. And provides meals or services for overnight guests not to exceed five guest room. So um, that. That would, I, as I understand it, Carl, and um. Would allow non-owner occupied. STRs that are currently functioning. To just add meals or services and become legitimate under this proposed ordinance.
Oh, that's, that's sort of correct, Chair, except that they wouldn't be under this ordinance. They would be coming in as a lodging level one. Uh, and so they would be going through essentially a change of use and they would go through the conditional use permit process. Uh, as it currently stands, um, and they could, you know, would be subject to concurrency review. Parking standards, all of the, all of those things that um. Current applicants have had to go through to have their short-term rental within the city. So. It, that, what we're trying, what we are trying to do with that lodging level one definition is make a clear distinction between short-term rentals. And essentially a bed and breakfast. But it is an avenue, absolutely, for. For folks who are currently operating. Without a permit or a business license. Um, do we want to take this? Do we, do you, do you want to get? Uh, some, some advice from the city attorney? Do we want to go? Into an executive session and. Have that discussion now or, or, you know, or is planning commission satisfied with where this conversation has led?
I see a couple heads nodding.
Executive session? Okay, give me one moment here. I'm setting up a Zoom, so I'll be sending you all a link here uh, in just one moment. And so. Uh, Daniel, could you come on and explain how this works for us one more time, please?
Yes, of course. Let me just quickly grab the RCW.
This is Daniel Kenny, the city attorney.
Um, so. The planning commission will go into executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero. Uh, subsection one. I. And for the executive session, um, we will. Go on to the other Zoom link and leave this Zoom completely. Um, the public can stay, uh, and their, and staff can stay in this current Zoom. Um, planning commission will come back. We will set a time that we will come back at in terms of numbers of minutes. I would recommend uh, five minutes and then we can always extend and we'll be in touch. Um, well, probably. Michelle, will you stay on this one or I, or somebody will stay on this one?
I'll stay on this one.
Okay, um, and so we'll let you know if we need to extend. And um, there is possible action to be taken afterwards consistent with the agenda. And so we'll come back and the meeting will continue. And so as soon and uh, five minutes or, or any duration that the commission feels is appropriate to start with. Again, we will have to stay that duration. Um, we can always extend longer as well.
Okay, thanks. I, I think, um, I don't think we're gonna get done in five minutes. Um, I, I would hope we can get it done in ten.
Ten's great and again, we can always extend, but we can't cut short.
Right. Okay. So, again, I just wondered. Uh, what's that, Carl?
Oh, sorry, uh, this is coming just, just shortly here. One second.
Hello, I just want to reinforce that our discussion. Uh, is protected by attorney-client privilege and so you need to make sure that you push the leave button. Um, from this before you join the other meeting.
Okay, you should have an invite in your. Inboxes, hopefully.
I just received mine. Thank you.
Okay, I'm leaving.
Getting pretty good at this.
We're waiting for Commissioner Brown and then we can. Give a minute or two and then we will go ahead and start the discussion and. Uh, allow him to join in. Soon as Commissioner Krosik there is, is back on screen, we'll go ahead and, and start our discussion. Okay, welcome back, everybody. So um, we left off with discussing uh, the possibility of, of uh, capping a certain number of. Non-owner occupied. STRs in the city.
Commissioner Brown just joined us, Chair.
Yes, yeah, thank you. I see that. All right. So um.
Chair, if I could, then I, I think, uh, just to kind of kick this off a little bit, I think. If, if the, if the planning commission is interested in exploring this idea of um, sort of two different. Types of short-term rentals. Uh, and thereby potentially two different. Um, permitting processes potentially. Uh, we likely, that would be a substantial enough change to. The current regulations that we're looking at tonight and that the plan, that the public has had a chance to review. And provide comment on that we would need to reconvene um. Likely at another study session and. And, and likely hold another public hearing and with the planning commission. This would also lead to uh. Just, just stating, just to state the facts, this would also lead to likely an extension um, of the current moratorium. On lodging level one.
All right, Commissioner Krosik.
Okay, well, as I said when I started this discussion, I'm, I'm. Comfortable to go either way on this. I can live with the ordinance that Carl has drafted. Uh, I could live with a proposal, uh, kind of like what we have been discussing for the last few minutes. Uh, I am not going to be available for the next meeting. I'll be landing in Iceland about the time that this meeting's taking place. Uh, but you know, I'm certainly comfortable with whatever the majority decides. One thought might be, we keep. The ordinance as Carl has drafted here. And uh, Carl would also draft a second ordinance. That would include some sort of limit of the number of owner occupied short-term rentals, but. I want to see whether that's even something that the members of the group are willing to consider or not.
If, if we drafted a second ordinance to go up, we would, we would need. To present that to the public prior to, prior to it being a part of your recommendation, I think. You, what, what could be done is that you could recommend this regulation. To city council. Uh, and then within your recommendation narrative. Make, make, make a, make the recommendation that council considers. Exploring that option. That you're, that you're proposing and put it, sort of putting it in council's hands.
Carl, I really like that idea and I think, you know, that would be a good way to move this process along. So we don't put the council in a position of having to keep extending the moratorium.
Well. There was some discussion about that and at, at the last meeting and, and. You know, that we need to, um, I think the consensus was that we needed to. You, you know, make a decision as a group, just put forward a, a singular recommendation and. You know, everybody's had the opportunity to express their, their viewpoints and, and. So I, 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 but I, I appreciate where you're coming from, Commissioner Krosik and um. I guess I'm kind of on the fence about it. Commissioner Soltes, what do you feel?
Well, I'm just trying to go through my mind all the comments that we heard and read and uh. It's pretty compelling that we. We're basically are going to pretty much shut off the whole short-term rental. Uh, business community if we go with our. Um, private uh, primary residence requirement. Um, I am not comfortable with going that far and. I, I don't think, if, if we opened up the process. You know, to reapplication, we don't need to make, give preference to people that are operating illegally. I mean, that was. That's a thought, but you know, the idea is, and I actually thought it'd be a good idea to just get everybody in, into the fold, if you will. That, that would be more important than then penalizing somebody for uh, running outside of the limits, but. I think it's, it behooves us to really think about. What's best for the community now. I think we still need to keep uh, some short-term rentals available in the community and the question we all have is. Where's the reasonable level and how do we find that point? I'm comfortable with us opening it up more broadly and if we did that, then I, I don't even know why we'd need a primary residence category anymore. It would be. Short-term rentals are in, in single-family homes that are allowed. And um, we let that happen and then we somehow figure out that. Magic point that makes sense for our city and our neighborhoods and perhaps the neighborhood. Issue is um. We developed something specifically for the, the most uh, busiest STR sites. And something um, to kind of hold that number into um, something what we would consider reasonable. So I'm okay with uh, uh. I, I don't think I necessarily want to send a primary residence recommendation to council. Because all the comments that we're getting right now will come right to the council and they're going to be right back thinking about looking. All these times that where people are, um, interests are being um, affected in one way or another. So. I guess I'm, I'm leaning toward a broader definition of what's allowable and. And with some kind of limiting mechanisms to be the.
So that would mean um. I don't want to say starting over, but that would mean going back to the drawing board and, and uh, extending the moratorium and. More work by us and then uh, and subsequent public hearing.
Yeah, rather than give a product, uh, push a product forward because the deadline is on us, I would. You know, we have to listen to the community, we have to be respectful of the community and I think we also need to find logic in what we do here and. You guys, the primary residence definition is going to be really hard to manage. I mean, how are we gonna look into the details of a primary residence and track that down? I just see that as really going to be a challenge. You know, I concur with what Commissioner Solstice has just said and, and we had a similar conversation, I think in. In our last study session and the group decided to, to go ahead with the primary residence and, and I, I think. As was just stated, that, that is going to be the crux of the problems that. We might face going forward from this meeting.
That, the, the difference, the thing that is different though in this ordinance tonight is, is the proposal. You, you know, of the lodging level one definition where it would open up another avenue, it would open an avenue for those. Currently operating non-owner occupied to become legal. Um, as a lodging level one facility. Um, and, but they would just have to modify their business model a little bit. Uh, by adding, uh, by providing services or meals. Do their overnight guests.
Um, and, and that's a fantastic point, Chair, and I'm glad you brought that up because that, that is, um, you know. And, and that's a fantastic point, Chair, and I'm glad you brought that up, because that, that is, you know, something that we realized at, at some point throughout this process, that we, we do need to, we, we don't want to cut off those businesses that are operating, even if they are operating without permits or business licenses, or maybe if they've been issued a business license by the city, and they've been operating under the auspices that they are operating legally and didn't really know it otherwise, want to make sure that we have an avenue, when we're not just saying, no, you cannot have your business within the city any longer. That's not true, you do have an option, you have an avenue for, for continuing to conduct your business. I also would just like to speak to, you know, we have received a lot of comments, and we have heard a lot about how these regulations might squash a lot of the short-term rentals within the city. We, we honestly, we don't actually know that to be true, although, and I'm not saying that people who have given us those comments are not telling the truth. I think we're all a little bit misinformed or under-informed, I guess I should say, under-informed in, in knowing how many of these exist in the city, how they're being operated. I think we heard from the Gig Harbor Short-Term Rental Alliance that they're not certain how any of the 33 that they've noted are being operated in the city. They don't know if they're owner occupied or, or non-owner occupied. They only know of a couple that they can say for sure. I think we also heard from other folks in the city that I, I get the sense they don't understand exactly how the primary residency is supposed to work, in that, you know, they're saying on one hand that this would, would crush their business, yet it sounds to me like they are an owner occupied, short-term rental currently. So they are living in the house, it sounds like, in a couple of these comments, that it is their primary residence. So they would still be able to conduct the short-term rental within that, within their, within that home. And if it's a matter of whether or not, you know, their, their need that income in order to maintain that, that, that house, or to keep that house within the family, or keep their, keep the roof over their head, they do have that opportunity to do that under this current ordinance as a primary residence. They only have to live in the house full-time 183 nights out of the year, and the rest of the time from, in the year, they could rent out the whole house. During those 183 nights, they could also rent out rooms. There's nothing in this ordinance that would prevent them from doing that. So I, I think we just need to be careful about what we're hearing from, from the public, and sort of need, we need, I think we need to tease some of that out just a little bit, in that, I'm not, I'm not certain that we have enough information to know for sure how these regulations are going to impact everyone involved. And I've noted that in the findings that we drafted, that, you know, that there would be a recommendation coming from Planning Commission, which I think you all had talked, talked about, or spoken to, spoke to early on in these discussions about, ask, recommending to Council that we monitor these regulations for a period of time while, while it's getting on its feet, to kind of see how it's, how it's working, how it's operating, how many folks we have coming in under the regulations, how is it impacting the community? Is it making the community better, is it making it worse, is it status quo? That's all data that, you know, we just don't have, and we don't really know. And I don't think there's a ton of that data out there. You know, we, we, we find a lot of articles that talk about the negative impacts and effects of short-term rentals on the communities, but there's also a lot of articles and data out there on the positive impacts of short-term rentals on, and the effects on the economy, you know, the local, local economy. And I, I think, I think both are true. How will it, in, how will it affect the city of Gig Harbor? We have no idea, to be quite honest.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, who was that?
Please go ahead.
No, I was just looking to, to get another comment, so go ahead, Tom.
One of the things I believe is that sooner or later, we're going to have to impose a cap on short-term rentals of any stripe in Gig Harbor. And I also think that there's a big risk that the city will be overwhelmed with applications if there isn't a cap. And what, think, think of what the city would do if it received 200 applications. I mean, what would you do?
We would, we would process 200 applications.
Is that what, is that what we want? I doubt it.
Well, I know, I agree with you, Commissioner Brown, I don't think it is what we want, and, and, you know, the idea behind this prime, using the primary residency as a sort of limiting factor in the proliferation of short-term rentals, the hope is that we wouldn't end up with 200 applications, because there wouldn't be 200 property owners who would want to rent their home out half of the year. There would just be the few who have either the need or a desire.
But then how are we fixing the problem of people that are operating illegally? That will still continue, I thought, part of our, I thought was here, we would develop a system where people would feel it's streamlined, it's fair, and they would want to permit, get permitted properly and get business license properly. If we create a, I don't, you didn't, not, not your word, Carl, but they say a more restrictive definition for STRs, will that solve our not, our illegal operating STR problem?
It, it, it may, it may, and it may not. Again, I, I would go back to, we're not entirely certain what impact this will have on that community. We're hearing what impact it might have from, from, from some folks in the public, but I, I would posit a guess that they don't know that for sure, or for certain either. And I understand what you're saying about making the regulations easier and more streamlined, and I think that that is exactly what we've, what we've done. There are people who are, were operating illegally throughout the city, but there are people who have illegal sheds in their backyards, that are, you know, that are sitting in their setbacks. For instance, you know, there's, there, there's code violations in the city every, you know, everywhere we look. And again, as I stated earlier, the City Council is interested in looking at our code compliance program. We now have a full-time code compliance officer 40 hours a week. So, you know, we're hopeful that, that, that the code compliance program in the city of Gig Harbor is going to change. I don't know how, I don't know if it's going to be dramatic or not, and, you know, but it, but it is going to change in some manner. And, you know, it also comes down to, to nuisance. Is that short-term rental that's operating illegal, illegally? Are they, are they being a nuisance, or are they truly operating above board, as many say that they are? If they are, then they may not be causing any problems in their neighborhood, and therefore there would not be any complaints coming in, we would have no reason to enforce upon them. That's, that's not a good answer, of course, we want everybody to come into compliance, but codes exist to prevent nuisance, for the most part, zoning codes especially.
Commissioner Greina, your thoughts?
Sorry, I'm having a sudden problem in my office, I'm trying to get out of the spotlight here. So a couple of things that, I mean, I like that lodging level one option as a way for some people to be able to continue to move forward, though the whole part about having meals is confusing to me. I don't know what that would look like. If, if you really aren't a bed and breakfast, and am I understanding that that's the requirement?
That's correct, Commissioner Greina, so the, the way it read before our lodging level one definition read that it, it would mean a single-family residence, which provides overnight lodging for guests, and may provide meals for overnight guests, not to exceed five guest rooms.
So, "may" is the key word?
That was the key word, so that would actually, if we kept that definition of lodging level one along with our short-term rental definition, then we'd effectively have two of the same thing, it would be a loophole. And so by making someone provide meals, so we take out "may", they must provide meals, and we also add it in, or services. So it could be some other type of business service, you know, maybe they, I don't know, they offer yoga or talks, or something along those lines, I don't know what it might be. But people also stay the night there, then that would be considered lodging level one, it's essentially a different use. It's no longer single-family residential.
Thanks for the clarification on that.
So, so which, which, are you advocating that we push this draft forward, or we, we go, we do some more work on it, pull back?
So there, there are two things. I, I don't believe that, you know, if we push this forward, that everybody who's currently operating is going to be out. I mean, I, I think that's an exaggeration, I think we've seen some letters from people that say that that's not true. So I, I don't like feeling that, that that is a fact, because I don't think that is a fact. You know, I, this is a difficult thing, because, I mean, I have spent hours reading the letters and comments and everything else, and, and, you know, the assumption that those things are being ignored makes me incredibly uncomfortable. And I think that everybody who's sitting here has spent hours and hours and hours poring over all these kinds of things. So it's the, in that vein of trying to stand up for what we've heard and, and be fair to, fair to both sides of this. You know, I like, I like the idea of either putting some kind of limit on it, or moving forward, and, and maybe putting a fit footnote that that's something that we think the City Council should consider as well. Did that answer your question?
Mr. Brown?
Well, I don't support moving forward with the ordinance that we have in front of us. I would be much more comfortable if we found a way to open a door for a limited number of none, of, of the non-owner occupied operations. I think we need to also put a cap on the total number for, for the town, and, and that's inevitable. If it doesn't happen this year, it will happen at some point in the future. And I agree that the primary residence definition is, it's not worth, the, the game, the, the game's not worth the candle there. That's going to cause so much uproar and, and resistance, and, and it's going to be so, it, it's going to be impossible to enforce. It'll promote cheating. I just think that's headed in the wrong direction, so that's where I stand on this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Krasnick.
I've heard so much information, and I find myself agreeing with almost everything that I've heard here that the, the group has discussed. But one thing is standing out for me right now, and that is, I think there is enough wiggle room within the ordinance as written, in which we've just discussed in the last few minutes, that people who are currently operating their short-term rentals, it probably wouldn't be that difficult for them to find a way to make it legal under the existing ordinance. So I guess I'm inclined to, to, to move ahead with what we've got here now, with that understanding. If the desire is to go ahead and have a certain number of non-owner occupied short-term rentals, and that they, they would be permitted, I would suggest that we have a substantial fee for individuals who are going to apply for those permits. And I think that would allow those people who are very serious about doing this, or who are currently doing this, to continue to do it and keep out the frivolous applications, which I think could potentially be a problem, or those people that were, you know, maybe going to get an application and rent the house out one week out of the year, that sort of thing. So, you know, I think my first choice would be to go ahead and move ahead with the ordinance, as we have written. My second choice would be to go ahead and rewrite a section that would allow individuals to a, a certain number of permits to be issued each year for non-owner occupied short-term rentals, and that that not be a very big number. Probably certainly not anything greater than 50, but that would also include, as I said, a sizable fee for applying for those type of permits, so that we know who's, that people are going to be serious about operating that business in a good and professional way.
Okay, at this point, I, I think I would suggest that the best course of actions to have another study session in a couple of weeks, and, and run this to ground. I thought we had before with the vote, but we, we now have Commissioner Brown back, and, and we've discussed this again, and opinions seem to be changing. And, and so we're gonna, we're gonna need to really give this some serious thought. And, and I would not recommend pushing this particular draft ordinance forward for the City Council to vote on, until after we have rectified this core issue.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Redbury, Commissioner Soltes.
I just had a quick question for Commissioner Krasnick. If, are you presuming that the private, personal residences would be unlimited, and the only limitation would apply to non-owner occupied STRs? So open-ended, basically, on one hand, and limited on the other?
Yes, that's correct.
Because I would posit that it's not necessarily, it's the total number that we're most concerned about. I mean, we, it, it could be a problem if either of those numbers got too high, but that's a sidebar to the major issue that Commissioner Bradbury just brought up. Are we ready to go forward with this document, or do we need to hold off on, and keep working it? Honestly, I'm getting a little bit weary of working it, and I don't know. But I think it's, this is, this is kind of the core, the core issue that we've struggled with for a long time. We're just getting smarter each time we do this, but this is where we're at, like, two months ago, I think, one of the major issues.
Well, yeah, granted, however, I think we've made a lot of refinements, you know, and, and we perhaps lose sight of that, because, you know, the elephant in the room is still here, and, and, you know, I think the bottom line is, until until we say that we are going to allow non-owner occupied, then those loud voices are going to continue, continue to clang in our ears. And, and I understand where they're coming from, but there are 10,000 people in Gig Harbor, and, and this is a, a small group of people have a very, you know, vested interest in, in trying to have non-owner occupied STRs in, in the city. So, there's no question in my mind that, that there is a benefit to the small businesses in, in Gig Harbor, you know, from, from any lodging that's provided in Gig Harbor, you know, but anyone can intuit that, as I do. You, you know, but anyone can intuit that as I do. Um, but there's no data that supports that. We have anecdotal stories, uh, about that. Um, because, and there's fear mongering, I believe on both sides. Um, that, that, the, that if you shut down the STRs, you're going to shut down and have a, a. A, a very negative impact on the small businesses in, in Gig Harbor. Um, yet there's no data that's provided, you know, that, that supports that, just as. The alliance argues that there's fear mongering and people talking about what if, what if, and yet there's no data that supports. All of the fear mongering or the concerns that people have that don't support. Having STRs in our, in our community and especially non-owner occupied STRs. So. So I'm, you know, I think the fact that some of us have moved along and, and, you know, I have certainly changed my opinions about some things. And. I, I think the reality is, is Carl has iterated earlier, was we, we just don't have the data. Um, and, and I'm as, as much of a small business supporter a, a, as anybody, you know, I shop in all the, all the shops, not all of them, but. Regularly downtown. When COVID hit, I committed to eating out every Thursday night with my family at one of the small business. Small businesses in Gig Harbor and it had to be family owned by a local family. And we did that every Thursday and we continue to do it to this day. Um, and that was my commitment to, to help keep. Um, small business restaurant owners afloat in Gig Harbor. Um, and, um, but the, the alliance will argue that we only can rent our, our rooms. For, um, three to four to five months a year. Um, and then we virtually have no business the rest of the year, and I believe that. But if that's true, then, then I don't see. Small businesses all over Gig Harbor shuttering because for. Six months to eight months to nine months of the year, they're not getting any income from. From people staying at STRs. So, so both of those things can't be true. So the, the, the point is. Uh, of course. Um, these folks are very interested and, and, you know, good on them for showing up every time. And good on them for providing input. Um, and, and I think it has influenced me and every other commissioner, um, of, because we have. This ordinance doesn't look, uh. I, I was gonna say anything like, but it looks very different. Than the first draft of the first ordinance that, that we were considering. Um, and we have come a long way based on the public comment. So I hear you, Bob, and believe me, I'm worn out too. And, and the thought of having another meeting. It, you know, it, it. Makes my knees buckle. But, um. We've said all along that, that we need to spend the time to get it right and, and. We're not going to meet an artificial deadline and we do have the ability to extend the moratorium. So. So we have at least three commissioners that are solidly against pushing this forward and, and a fourth who's ambivalent. And, um. My, I, I'm kind of probably closest to Commissioner Griner's camp that, that with. This lodging level one opportunity, providing an avenue for the, the non-owner occupied to continue to, to operate. But under you having to get a condition to use permit as a lodging level one, um, I'm quite, I'm quite comfortable with that. Um, and, and that allows them to continue to do, you know, what they're doing. And so I would be comfortable therefore, um, moving this forward. Um, but, uh, I'm also comfortable, especially with, you know, it having three commissioners. Solidly against not moving it forward with saying, okay. That as, as distasteful as it feels and as wearying as it's going to be. That, that we can, you know. Revisit it, Larry, and I, and I understand, um. Were, didn't we already decide this? I hear you. And, and I think, I think we all do, um. So. So I guess the bottom line for me is that, that it looks to me like. The consensus and it's just unfortunate that, that we are, we, we have a, a functionally open seat right now. Um, because Commissioner Bennett's, um, uh, term has actually expired and, and. She has been extended, um, but the council has, is in the process of, of, um. Filling that seat. Um, and, and my term has also expired. So, um, and I've been extended as well. So, but nonetheless, we have six members right now that have been in, involved with this discussion over the past several meetings instead of seven. So at best we are at, would be at three, three, um, and, and so, uh, as far as moving this forward. And, um. It looks more like three and a half, two and a half, or, you know, again, I am, I am completely comfortable either way. Um, so that's where I am and, and if anybody would like to make any comments, uh. After, after all of that, you know, feel free.
Sure. Oh, if I could, it's, um, it's eight o'clock. Uh, if the. Planning Commission would like to extend. Past eight o'clock, we'll need a, we'll need a vote.
Okay. Well, are there, are there any quick comments?
Yeah, I got a quick one. Uh, if we extend, what do we expect we're going to be doing when we extend? Are we going to recraft the definition of what? The primary function we would re, we would discuss rewriting this to be more broad to include owner occupied. That seems to be the only, um, issue and we. That, that's all I want to make sure. What, what is our next thing? We're going to get out of another extension. And, uh, we may end up the extent, we may end up having a deadlock. After we extend for another week, I don't know how that would work. But I really think, Carl, this, this. Off ramp you've got for level one a, as, as a potential for owner occupied. It's kind of a, it's kind of a jury rig kind of thing. I mean, if, if we're gonna have a, make it available to owner occupied, we ought to, you know, have that discussion and say so. If we're not. And. I mean, it's, it's, it's. It's very clever, but I don't know if it's really very transparent and open and clear, clean.
Uh, un- understood, Commissioner Soltis. And, you know, I, I, as you guys were talking, I, I opened up. My original, um, ordinance that I, that I had written around this subject. And in that ordinance, I actually had, the first time we reviewed this, we actually had. Short term rental category one, which was a single family residence accessory apartment. Owner occupied. And I had a short term rental category two, single family residential, non-owner occupied. And then I also had a short term rental category three that included duplex, triplex, fourplex, multifamily, mixed use and live aboard. When that was presented and at the time commissioners were, were not in favor of, uh. Of that, of those ideas. Uh, and so. I, I guess my, my point is this, that we, we've already got some bones. I've got some, you know, we have some bones drafted for kind of leading towards what. The commission is, um. Proposing right now. Uh, and so, you know, I, I think we, we could pull something together. I also know that there's other jurisdictions that have similar. And, uh, you know, Jeremy found several jurisdictions that have. Um, hosted versus unhosted, um, or STR one and STR two. Very similar to what I just described right there in this, in this original ordinance. So. Um, we can, we can get there from here, uh, for sure. Uh, so if planning commission wants to do that, then. We can certainly do it.
Jared, make a motion that we continue beyond eight o'clock.
Okay, um, maybe fifteen minutes.
Second that.
Any discussion? Everyone in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, want to pose saying no? Okay, that will go to eight fifteen. Thank you. Well, I, I, my, my interpretation, Bob, is that, that, that. The thing that was thrown on the table was you're putting a cap. On. The total number of, of STRs. In the city. And that there would be, need to be staff work done with that. And, and have that fleshed out. That, you know, what would, what would that look like? What would that mean? Because I, I think most of the other ordinance. You know, everyone's pretty comfortable with.
Are, is that the case that we're only, it's just the cap that we, that we want to explore? So what I just described is not, is not true. We don't, we're not looking at owner occupied and non-owner occupied.
I think we're looking at both those things, uh, because. I read all these things about when, when the owner is, is there and people are staying and that, that's. I mean, I, I, I think that's worth at least having a co- more of a conversation about. Um, but I do agree that in the long run. Uh, the ideas to limit the number of this and not, uh, to get out of hand. So I think. That's the reason why, to me, a cap is an, is an important thing.
And then we have to keep in mind that if we do a cap, then is it, you know. It's a lottery system.
Then how does that work? How do you figure that out? How long does it last? All those things, right?
I have heard of jurisdictions that do cap, that have done caps on short term rentals. Uh, and then. But you're only, you may only run your short term rental for a period of time. And then you have to discontinue it for a certain period of time and then you can enter back into the pool after that. So, you know, these are bigger places, obviously. And they also have, you know, staff that are only administering short term rentals. And I think that's something else we have to keep in. Keep in mind with this is that if we're looking at, you know, capping this. Um, there's a, you know, there's a management piece to that as well, uh, that we have to.
Yeah, I see the issue of owner occupied versus non-owner occupied is two quite different things. Because I think with the order occupied, you've got, you preserve or. Doing a much better job of preserving the neighborhood continuity. When you've got a non-owner occupied, you've got neighborhood continuity issues. And so I do see them quite differently.
The, there, there's another premise here that could be explored and that is that, you know, allowing. Non-owner occupied. Uh, short term rentals in, say, you know, commercial. Uh, on, on, on commercial properties only. So. In, uh, you know, in like a mi- in a mixed use setting. Uh, and then, and then keeping the primary residential. Short term rentals. Uh, to just the residential, residentially zoned areas.
Help me out, Carl's, uh, what is Millville? Qualify it.
It's residential.
Residential?
It's R one, so it would be residential. So you wouldn't have, you know, you wouldn't have any sort of mixed uses going on there. You wouldn't, you don't have a, you don't have a business district per se, you know, you look at. Now downtown, the DB, that's a true business district. And we have other areas of town, uh, that would qualify for that. You know, if you go like Olympic. And Point Fosdick, that whole area up there. Uh, behind Harbor Greens where you have the condominiums and the. And we don't have a lot of that mixed use in the, in town. But then you also have areas where you have mixed use on the property. You know, you might have a building that's commercial. Um, and then, uh, a residential, uh, on the same site, but not necessarily a mixed use building in that way.
Greg, I think both issues need to be, uh, uh, discussed more, you know, what, how broad do we want the STR definition to go? And if we were to go with, um. Both components. What's the reasonable and just, um, what number is, uh, can be justified as a cap? How do you justify it? And Carl makes a good point about, you know, administering it, but. I don't really think you need to have an in and out kind of thing with the lottery every year. I think you're in. For whatever period of time you're in and then you're, uh, that number, you don't just rotate people in and out of it. That just seems like a bad way to run. Railroad to me.
Okay, thanks. So do you feel like you have some direction, Carl?
Yeah, I think so. I, it's just that, you know, it's, it's rethinking how this operates in a lot of ways because. Uh, you know, it just, it just occurred to me then, you know, the way we've got this set up now, you get a, you get a short term rental permit. Uh, and then you get a business license. We're regulating, essentially then we're regulating, once they have that, you're essentially regulating the short term rental. Uh, via the annual business license renewal. So if you cap this at say fifty and fifty and forty nine. Come in and renew their business license. That fiftieth one that did not renew its business license still has a short term rental permit. But someone else may have gotten their short term rental permit in the interim and now they come in for their business license. So that other short term rental. That does have a permit, doesn't have a business license. Now they're kind of, I guess, in the queue, waiting for a business license to drop so that they can come back in if they wanted to. I just see it getting. A little bit messy in the long run, because we'll, you know, the idea was that the short term rental permit would not expire. It would kind of, until the. Well, until the owner dissolved there. Well, I suppose the short term rental permit would go away if they didn't keep their business license. Okay, I, I, I see it. I see that now. That would work. I had to talk through it.
Yeah.
Okay. Details, details.
It's a complex issue, this one.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I. I think, uh. We're probably up against time. Can't get my computer on to know what time it is. Oh, no, it's self.
Eight, ten, sure. So, so staff will explore this idea of a, a cap. And we'll come back with some. With, with, with some, some data and some recommendations. At the August eighteenth. Study session. And that'll be a five fuck, five o'clock.
Right. Right.
Everybody looks happy.
Carl, you, you mentioned, uh, so, some additional materials that you were. Offering in draft that were to go to the council along with the ordinance. Where are those and when will we see them?
Well, there is no point in them now, uh, because those are all geared towards this current regulation. So we, we would be. Redrafting those once we land on, um, sort of the direction that you wanted to go.
Well, do you think those documents would? Would be pertinent to us making a different decision? I mean.
No, that, what, what it is, it's just, it's just a, a bunch of whereas statements, um, that are in support of these current regulations. Um, and so it's, it's essentially, uh, planning commission's findings. On, um. What, what, what the process has done so far. Um, and, and in that, you know, we talk about some of the cities that we looked at, some of the. Some of the support from, um. Uh, from the, uh, comprehensive plan. Um, some of the. Documents and articles and things that, um, the planning commission submitted for. Justification for those regulations, but I think if we're going the way that we're going, it's a. In my mind, it's a bit of a sea change and I could be wrong about that, and you know, but. I need to, we, Jeremy and I need to sit down and. And, uh, talk about it and figure it out, but it, it, it seems like a sea change in, in these regulations to me.
Okay. Well, the only other comment I would like to make, you know, for the public is that appreciate the comment about when we were requesting to have people state their name and their address be, you know, before they made a public comment. And that is just something that that was modeled after what the council did, and it's kind of always been done in the planning commission. Carl had brought that to my attention earlier this week. And so we realized that that indeed that's not in our bylaws, and so we're not going to have that requirement. I think it is of interest to the to the commissioners to know if the individual that is speaking is a resident of the city of Gig Harbor. And but as always, we welcome public comment from anyone, whether they're inside the city or outside the city. So we appreciate that being brought up to us and and I hope you appreciate the change.
Hey, Chair, one more point of clarification, if I could. So we're staff is looking into this cap. We're also looking into the idea of owner occupied versus non-owner occupied, correct?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Thank you.
And and how those two things might relate to each other.
Okay. So we've got some, we've got some research to do.
Yeah. Okay. All right, other business, next agenda item?
Well, we were going to be bringing a couple of the comp plan, comprehensive plan docket amendments forward on the eighteenth for an initial study session. But I I don't know if we'll be doing that or not now, if we're going to be looking at short term rentals. So I have to I have to discuss with with staff.
Okay.
But definitely short term rentals are coming on the eighteen.
All right. Okay. Any other comments by any of the commissioners? If not, I'm willing to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
I second.
Any discussion about the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously and resoundingly. I am adjourning the meeting at eight sixteen PM. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, all. Take care.